I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the February 22 meeting of the Radnor Township Board of Commissioners, our second meeting of the month. And I want to announce that prior to this meeting, we had an executive session, meeting of all commissioners except for Commissioner Nagel, and we discussed personnel and real estate. We may have also discussed litigation, I guess we could say that, too. Okay, let us go ahead now to our esteemed Director of Parks and Recreation, Tammy Cohen. She has a recognition to give us or talk about.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer, for coming down here with me for this recognition. Tonight, we want to take an opportunity to thank and recognize the Radnor Hotel, who is here with us this evening. The Senior Vice President is here with us, Lou Prebo, along with Anita Sayers, who is in charge of their marketing and public relations. So I want to thank them and recognize them. If you could come up for the recognition. Our department has had the privilege of working with the Radnor Hotel and their hosting of the annual Daddy Daughter Dance. It took place on Friday, February 5. It was the fifth annual event, and it was actually the third time that they've hosted the event with tremendous success. So we want to thank them for their time and their efforts. Anita, of course, all the leadership of the professional staff that was there in the evening and the delectable display of desserts and appetizers that were prepared. We had a sellout event with over 200 daddies and daughters, and it's evolved into a highly regarded event here. We actually had a waitlist of about 20 to 25, so it was definitely something folks were waiting to get in to participate and be part of. And, of course, that's a testament to your tremendous facility. The elegant hotel really provided amazing, amazing atmosphere and something, of course, all the daddies and daughters will remember forever. So we want to take an opportunity to thank you for that.
Thank you very much, Tammy.
Thank you so much, Anita.
Thank you. Thank you, Tammy, and thank you, gentlemen and lady from the Radnor Hotel. It's a great public service. Let's go to our consent agenda now. We have items A through E, and these are items that, as a general matter, our Board of Commissioners enacts or passes and block without debate or discussion. Any Commissioner can ask that any one of those items be taken off of the consent agenda, and any member of the audience could also request that if they feel that they want to have us look at them publicly and examine them. They've all been vetted with our staff, our management, so they've all been analyzed, and they come to us now ready for action. So is there any Commissioner that would like to remove any one of those items? And is there anybody in the public that would like to do that? All right, I'll take a motion then to approve the consent agenda.
Summated.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. It passes six to zero. All right, let's move to public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to say anything at this point that they will not be able to stay around till the end of the meeting? If so, you can come forward and do so.
I'm not sure. It seems like a short meeting, but in case it goes long, I do want to get my comments in. My name is Leslie Morgan. I currently reside at 12 Farm Road, Radnor. I've lived in Jim's Ward for, I don't know, 12 or 13 years now. And recently, the last meeting, there was a large crowd, which was always great because there isn't sometimes a large crowd that is interested in the ideas. What drew that meeting to such a large crowd was that the St. David's preschool was, their long-term lease was terminated by their landlord. I don't know the reasons behind the sudden termination, but it was terminated. And so they went looking, this LL C, a private corporation, went looking, and they approached the board with an idea of leasing it and putting some money into the improvements of the cottage. As I understand the deal, at least what I've gotten that's on, I think, I'm not sure all of it is on the website, but what I understand is basically they would pay $45,000 in, and they would require that $45,000 each year to be recycled into that residence as well, undetermined that they would pay property taxes, undetermined if they would pay any other kind of thing. They would improve it. Most improvements surround their needs, an elevator, and for that, we might get a piece of what has not been used for five years to rent out, though it would be encapsulated in a preschool. So where I would like to comment tonight is I have put in an offer to purchase it, and I came up with that just at the last meeting out of my head because I think time has caught up. I think there's a great opportunity, and I may be not in the right ballpark. I say, "Put it out for bid." Then I started thinking today, what would I say when I came tonight? Because you are in possession of my offer, which could be an offer of purchase outright or lease long-term with substantial improvements as well. And I guess the positive of a family moving in would be all the surrounding residents wouldn't complain. There wouldn't be a takeover of the willows by 200 preschoolers, 160 and 40 of their teachers. And so I think that's a really big thing. Also, you could get money upfront and revitalize your living, learning idea, Elaine, that you so won at the cottage, which has been left fallow. So I think my idea has a lot of merit. I'd like it to be put out for public bid. I would also like the commercial use to be put out for bid because, as I understand it, I was at the first meeting years ago, and you put that out for bid, and developers like Kaz Holloway, who's here, and I have no idea what he's going to talk about, but he put a beautiful presentation on. You weren't interested, but he certainly does a quality product. And I know that it was publicized in the paper, as I recall, for people to come forth because there was a caterer that we were managing at a loss, and it seemed right to try and do a public-private partnership. And so I guess I tell you here that no matter what happens, you have a great opportunity to retain what you were supposed to retain, which was the land from the Zanzingers. You could have a family living there, but no matter what happens, whether it be another preschool with a stronger balance sheet than St. David's, maybe a public company even, and much more rent, and maybe property taxes to pay, I think it needs to be put out for notice, you guys. And that is why, and that would probably hurt me because I'd love to live there, but I think what would be the right thing is we put it out for bid because this does not feel right that somebody came in and there was no competition. Thank you very much.
All right, does any Commissioner want to comment? Anything? All right. Is there anybody else that wants to say anything from the audience at this point? Okay. Let's move ahead then to Public Works and Engineering. This is assigned to me as my area, Public Works, and it would be Resolution 2016-25, a presentation by Mr. Wyble of CH2M Hill, who is here in the audience. And the resolution pertains to our board authorizing a township-wide study of our waterways and how they affect our property and our people from the standpoint of flooding, flood control. So, Mr. Wyble, do you want to come forward? I hope you were expecting to speak tonight.
Good evening. I didn't prepare any slides, so I don't know what the board would prefer, if I'd walk through the proposal step by step, or if you have any questions right away.
Well, I guess can we just make clear where we are right now? We have a watershed assessment for Eithin Creek that's been completed, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so now we're looking into a watershed assessment for Meadowbrook Run, Darby Creek, and Gulf Creek, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and also, is it going to explain how their issues intertwine additionally, or are we just getting three done, one for each done?
So the idea is that this is a comprehensive assessment of the stormwater conditions in all four watersheds, including, there's, I believe, two small areas that don't actually fall within those four main watersheds in the township. So it would be a comprehensive flood study of the entire township. So we would be focusing on the other three watersheds that you mentioned. We would be also looking at Eithin in so much as we need to kind of fill in some of the gaps of the previous study. The previous study was fairly limited in scope. It was, I hope, effective for what it was and for the budget that was available for that, but this would be a more comprehensive look at the entire township.
I would actually like for you to go through.
Sure.
It is a lot of, $258,000, and, you know, I think that the township manager, Mr. Zinkowski, would say that we've already studied this stuff, and he's had a study done, and that we've had many studies, and so why would we want to spend $258,000 to rehash this? I think a lot of people know where it floods. I think that's the case. And then the other thing is, how long is it going to take? It's going to take, it takes a long time to spend $258,000 in hourly rates. So it's going to take a long time to get this done.
We project, I would say, five to six months, roughly, to do this scope of work. So just to go through, there's, oh, sure, sure.
I have similar concerns. What I would see as valuable...
Mike? Thank you. I have similar concerns. What I would see as valuable is, what I see we need is to evaluate interventions. So I don't see any reason why we would study an area that anecdotally we know to be problematic unless we need to gather data to evaluate the intervention. And then I also don't see why we would spend any money to study an area that we know to not be problematic. So for me, the value of this was in, you know, Task Three and Four, which was the sensitivity analysis. There was a lot of money in Tasks One and Two, and I would need to be convinced that there's value in those two tasks.
Well, you're right that Tasks Three and Four are really the heart of this effort. That's where most of the computational work is happening. But to go back to Task One, Task One, which is a fairly small, it's the smallest task besides the administrative part of this, that's really about refining a previously developed township-wide flood model at a very high level and really collecting, combining, and organizing all the anecdotal evidence that we've acquired in our time working for the township, and all the information that the Public Works Department has, its meeting with all the stakeholders. It's really trying to organize and come up with the definitive list of the problem areas throughout the township and to rank that to some degree, at least prioritize it at a high level. What are the highest areas of most significance from a flooding standpoint? So that's really Task One, is completing, refining a previously developed model at a high level.
Is that previous model the one that Chagrin Valley Engineers did in July of 2011?
No, I should clarify that. No, that was a model that we developed as part of our Eithin Creek study. So while the focus of the previous study was the Eithin Creek watershed, we were asked to look at the entire township. We were asked by the SWIMAC, I should say challenged, if you will, while we were developing this high-level model using our flood model or software, if we could expand that, because it made sense, it was cost-effective, to expand that to the entire township, and that's what we did. But we didn't refine the results for the other watersheds like we did for Eithin. So this would be refining those results and really coming up with a comprehensive list of those problem areas. Two is really about the data gap analysis and collection. We need data if we're going to build a model, a hydraulic model. So we don't have a comprehensive database, if you will, of the storm sewer network in the township. We're starting to build that from some of our work in Eithin. We've helped the township develop a GIS system, a geographic information system. So we're starting to put the pieces of this together, but right now, we only have spatial data for storm sewers, and even that information is either incomplete or not 100% accurate. So we need data. And what Task One will do, and hopefully this addresses Commissioner Curly's comment, Task One is really trying to pinpoint where we need to do the further investigation, where we're going to be taking a deeper dive into the model. Two is then, once we've kind of narrowed down the focus, it's then looking to see what we have at the township office, the Public Works Office, in terms of records available. There are a lot of plans available, a lot of ASBILTs, a lot of record drawings, development plans. It's looking to see what's available, what we need. We're not going to model every pipe and every inlet and every manhole, certainly, but we need to model the key ones. So that task is really trying to find the information that we need. If it doesn't exist, then we need to do some fieldwork. We need to go out and do some surveying, for lack of a better term. It's not going to be professional-grade surveying by any means, but we need to get inverts, we need to get diameters, we need to have some, at least, idea of the spatial, the location of these pipes and confirm it's what we already know. So that's really what Task Two is. It's getting the data that we need to then build a model, which is Task Three. Task Three is, we call it enhanced flood modeling. It's building a hydraulic and hydrologic model of existing conditions where it makes the most sense to do that. Again, we're not modeling the entire township to this extent, and I should mention, this is a time and materials contract, so we're not, we're only billing what we need to spend, if that makes sense. So that's what Task Three is. It's really building a model. We need to build a model of existing conditions before we can start analyzing potential solutions to our problems. And that's Task Four. It's identifying and modeling conceptual flood mitigation solutions. This is very similar to what we did for Eithin. Again, the difference here is that now it won't be as, for lack of a better term, piecemeal. It'll be much more comprehensive. We'll be able to, once we have a model developed for a certain area, we'll be able to plug in various flood mitigation solutions and determine which are the most effective, what combinations would be most effective of these different solutions. So it really gives us kind of the ability to now hopefully answer some of the questions in a little bit more of a comprehensive way that have come up. And then Task Five is prioritizing those conceptual solutions. It's coming up with a prioritized list, so we take our, you know, 20 to, say, 25 ideas that we've run through the model. We have good results, quantifiable results, and this Task Five is prioritizing those. And that's really a two-part task. The first part is developing the criteria. We envision some kind of a workshop or a series of workshops. There could certainly be some overlap with regular SWIMAC meetings. Maybe this is an event, a special event, if you will, beyond a typical SWIMAC meeting. And that can really happen at any point in the process. That could happen, you know, tomorrow. I mean, that's getting that list of criteria and ranking that criteria, what's important to the community, the township. That can happen at any time. Once that framework's in place, we'll take all the projects that we've developed at a concept level, we put it into this tool, and again, we end up with a prioritized list. So in a nutshell, that's the five tasks that we proposed.
So for me, Task One and Two, to an extent, are really important because Chagrin did a great job, but they didn't include everything. And there have been several really important projects that have come to light since then and are not included and may or may not be, you know, rise to the top as important projects, but I feel like, you know, for those people who are suffering, who have come forward since Chagrin, you know, that needs to be part of the study. So to me, that's really important, that we kind of complete the universe of what's out there to really look at. You know, this was part of our, this $250,000 was part of the budget that we discussed and passed, I think we passed it last meeting. So we've already, you know, had an initial discussion about this and had some buy-in. And I want to also point out that it is frustrating to have more studies because part of the reason of this whole effort, this whole having this fee, having our committee was to stop the studying and start doing because we've been studying for 30 years and we've done very little. But I want to point out that while this study is going to be happening in the next six months, we are actually also simultaneously taking some action. We have already in place approval to move forward with the Banbury-Francis Project, which is moving forward. We have already put in progress the study of and perhaps moving forward with the middle school hookup. So we have two important projects sort of in the works, and not to mention, we also have all the culvert work and the repair and bridge work that has been going on 2014, 2015, and will continue to go on, and the maintenance and cameraing that this whole scheme was set to fund as well. So I don't, if we decide to go ahead with this study, I don't want to leave the impression that we're still sitting there wringing our hands and not doing anything and just studying still. We have already taken, and we would have been moving forward with a third big project at North Wayne had things gone differently, but they didn't. I do have one question that I just want to clarify with you about the modeling. So the modeling that's envisioned in Step Four, does that include approximations of cost?
Yes.
Okay, so then the prioritization discussion that happens in Step Five, that's an analysis of the situation and also a cost-benefit analysis?
That's correct. Yes, we envision the prioritization process. Again, this would be, we would put into a blender all the criteria that, you know, the community and the SWIMAC helps us to develop, and I imagine it's going to be costs, it's going to be community benefit, flood reduction, obviously. All those things go into this prioritization tool.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I wanted to follow up on, again, I'm frustrated with it as well, more studies. We've been collecting the fee for two years. We've had a stormwater management committee who's been looking at all these for two years, and as Elaine pointed out, we've already made the choice on what the priority locations are, and at least for a couple of them. And I don't see how this is going to advance the goals of the Stormwater Management Committee. I think that we should just, we've identified the things and we should start on them. We're going to be, by the time we get done, the six months, it's going to be three years that we're still studying. And that's a classic case of where government is collecting money and just spending money on administrative expenses. So, and I think we've identified, I thought tonight we were going to talk about hooking up the middle school, detention, underground detention that's built there. We need, there's been a variety of issues, so I thought that we were going to be talking about that tonight rather than studying the whole township. Can't we forego this whole step?
Are you talking about Task One or the whole effort?
The whole scope of work for $258,000. I would forego the whole scope of work. You can do elements of it as we do, the key is, it's always going to be subjective, what projects are going to be priority. The key is to get the most effective intervention, as Mr. Curly puts it, the most effective intervention per dollar spent in each one of these areas. And that's where we should put, if we're going to have some study done, I think that that should be it. And in general, we should rely on the Stormwater Management Committee to prioritize. We don't need to do an overall review. The only time you don't have to do a priority is where you have two or three that are very similar in scope, and then we might have to do some additional testing. So again, can't we skip this whole thing and just proceed with the work?
And I don't believe we can without at least some semblance of the scope. I know Chagrin obviously did some work a few years ago. It was good, it was very high level. This is building a tool in form of the model that will allow us to simulate what these different ideas will do, their benefits downstream, their benefits locally and downstream in a much more quantified way.
But that's only one piece of it. They're going to simulate what most of, there's a lot of survey, there's all this preliminary work. Again, for two years, the folks have been working on it, and you can agree or disagree with their conclusions, and Chagrin did some work, and you can agree that, you know, with their proposals or disagree with their proposals, but the work's been done. And this element, why don't we expand those interventions and modeling once we pick the ones that we're working on rather than review the entire township again?
That's certainly another approach. I mean, if you're talking about Task One, eliminating Task One, that's certainly something that you could all decide to do. I do agree, I mean, we all know where the hotspots are. Steve Norsini has pointed out a number of those locations. There were at least nine or 10 that he considered kind of the most significant flood locations. Unfortunately, some of those are down in the lower reaches of the Darby in the southern portion of the township, and a lot of the runoff is coming from outside of Radnor Township. That's another issue. So we're only going to be able to do so much with interventions within the township, but again, that's another issue. So I don't know if I answered that question or not.
Again, just, I'll just finish. Task One, identification of flood risk locations in Radnor Township, it's been done. We don't need that four weeks. And data gap analysis and collection, again, I think that questions asked and answered, and then enhanced flood modeling, existing conditions, you know, that that can be done in conjunction with the priority projects and as Four and Five as well.
I would agree up to a point when you say priority projects. I don't know if we have priority projects. We have priority problem areas, and from those problem areas, we need to kind of work backward and find out where does it make the most sense to do some interventions. And I don't know if we're going to have silver bullets, per se, but there's certainly going to be opportunities within these watersheds where we can help make a dent in the flooding. I think Commissioner Curly, at the SWIMAC meeting in January, had some really interesting comments about, you know, don't try to control the floodway or define the floodway, kind of work with the floodway, and I completely agree with that. We're not going to be solving issues of great flooding magnitude where a lot of the water's coming from outside of the township. But I think that, you know, to answer those questions, it's not just about priority projects, it's the problem areas and working backward and getting the data. That's what Task Two is. It's really getting the data that we need to build a model that will give us a reasonable idea of what's happening and what we need to mitigate those problems. And again, we're not trying to model every pipe, certainly. In other communities, maybe we've looked at a pipe of a certain minimum diameter, maybe it's 18 inches or 24 inches, something like that, enough that we can analyze the problem and analyze the potential mitigations.
Dan, can I ask you a question real quick on, just to start off? One, this modeling that you're doing, is that similar to the sensitivity analysis that Don's in favor of that we did for the Banbury Way Project where you kind of show three different ways of handling it depending on how much you want to spend and how much benefit you're going to get? Will that include to that point as well?
Yes, very much so. There is some uncertainty in this scope of work. We don't know exactly where we're going to be modeling and to what extent, and we think that this effort needs to be somewhat organic and needs to kind of evolve, and hopefully we build in some of the flexibility into our scope and in our fee. But yeah, we would certainly be doing that kind of sensitivity analysis like we did for Banbury.
So that gives us, we could make choices as to what level of payment we want to make to fix these problems and what level of benefit they will get, rather than just yes, no on any of these projects.
Right, that's the idea.
Okay, that's important. I just want to say that I went to the Stormwater Committee, attended it last February 10th, I think it was, and I was impressed with the level of work that the folks were doing and the issues that they were grappling with. I know some of the other commissioners may have also, Donna and others have attended their meetings. This is a case, I think, of asking folks to come up with their, to give us priorities, and I saw them as saying, hey, we need help to make these priorities. There are not four or five people there who know how to do this sitting up here. They need to go out and get fieldwork done, to get this modeling done, to get the data out there in a way that makes this possible. And that's how I understood this to be. With all the work that had been done before in terms of studying, we still don't have anything that approaches a master plan for this, do we?
No.
And this would lead to such a plan, wouldn't it?
That's exactly what it's meant to do.
That's what I thought this would be doing. That's what I thought this would be doing. As far as not, you know, getting, you know, studying overnight, I also share your frustration on trying to get things moving, you know. However, at the same time, I have to point out that you folks have already done a very excellent pilot program that actually proves this concept. You went ahead and studied one watershed, identified some critical areas, went out and did some modeling, come up with some sensitivity analysis, and presented to the board choices on what to make. And we chose from that. And you have some very specific projects, a very major one that's already in the pipeline or that will be in your budget to do, correct?
That's correct.
So there, for me, that's not sitting around waiting for another study. You've gone ahead and done what every business should do. And as you don't go out and do a million things at once, you go out and do a pilot, see if this is going to work, get some, build up some steam, and then build on that, which is what I see you doing here, you know, in terms of making a master plan for the things. Because it's from there that then you can make the prioritization. I see the whole thing driving the project to point number five. And the key word there is prioritization of the projects that you want to get to. That's the outcome that you're looking for. That's the outcome I think we're looking for. And that's the outcome that I think the stormwater committee is looking for, and you have to have a partner to do that because you can't come up with that sitting up here, right?
Correct.
Fair enough. I mean, I saw this as almost very much akin to what happened with the Radnor Open Space Network and Trails program, that committee that was done. I was on that committee, I saw them in action. We spent probably six months trying to get ourselves together to say, what do we want to do? So there is some investment of time to say, hey, let's organize ourselves. But once we did, we worked with a very capable consultant, like yourselves or other folks, to go ahead and identify that. And we took four or five or six months to go ahead and create a master plan. We worked with people, went to workshops, we had people come on in here to give their opinions. And that took time to do that. We also went out and did field visits. And they came up with a plan that the board of commissioners subsequently approved, of this is the trails that we wanted to have, and it may take 20 years to do that. But we took time today to organize and identify what pieces of property, what trail outlooks that we wanted to do, and we prioritized them. Come to find out, within six months or seven or eight months later, we've got plans to make two of those trails come to pass, right? Three, three, all right, thank you Elaine. Three, three of them. That's pretty quick movement on that. And it can only happen, in my opinion, when you have a master plan to guide you, to give people a frame of reference. In my book, this is not just science, this is communication, it's a shared vision. And you do that, you have to just not do things piecemeal. But I think a study like this is very important to take. Can you do it faster? I'll leave that to you, all right? But I think it's important to be able to do this kind of work.
What did we do the last two years?
Well, I think, I don't know.
Why are we waiting two years to do it?
Well, I don't think, because first of all, I'm going to tell you that it probably take them a little bit of time in the beginning to organize themselves. You've got people that try to do it. Secondly, though, most importantly, they've done a study. How long did that take you to do? Which is the watershed analysis you did do and the prioritization that resulted. How long did that take?
Two to three months, roughly.
Okay, all right, so there you go, you had the output from there. So right now, we're at the cusp of doing it. Why are we asking the people who want to do this, and they say, we want the help, we want the study to be able to tell you? Why are we asking them to go ahead and forget that and go do stuff piecemeal? At the same time, we will go ahead with other projects, right? We will go ahead with repairs that are needed. We know some problem areas, and we're still going to go ahead and fix them independent of this because we know in concert. One final question for you. When you have a study like this, a master plan level kind of study, is it possible to get grants, state grants, federal grants, that you can use to go ahead and leverage that information and leverage the money that you have in your pot to go do more?
To do more studying, to do more project implementation?
Do the project.
Oh, absolutely.
So tell me about that just for a moment. What would you do?
Well, so this effort is, the idea is that we will come up with, as I mentioned, a prioritized list. And this is a list of years' worth, potentially years' worth of projects. And it's not to say that there's not going to be other projects that come up later on. You know, the township may acquire properties that open up other possibilities, who knows?
Sure.
But for example, the city of Lancaster, PA, they're one of our clients. We've been working with them for the past four or five years. I don't remember the exact number, but we've helped them, I want to say over a million dollars in grants, achieve. They have a very ambitious green infrastructure program, that's what they call, you know, sustainable stormwater solutions, green infrastructure, it's one of the terms. So they have a very ambitious program, and they've been installing dozens of these systems for their combined sewer system. And so, yeah, we've helped them obtain various grants.
Do you do that with one-off projects, or do you need some kind of concept of what you're trying to accomplish in a larger frame, especially in the context of working and communicating about working with other townships in a regional basis as well?
Absolutely. It can be one-off projects, it can be programs, I think both of those are viable options.
Okay, and you can identify them this way. You know, Elaine, I guess, how many grants did we get for the trails so far? You know, several hundred thousand dollars so far, right?
Well, and we expect to get at least a 50% match for every project.
Right. I see this as possibly leading to a point, hopefully, we might be able to get this to a point where this becomes not the sewer fund where we go ahead and pay for everything we're going to do, or not sewer, stormwater, I'm sorry, but that this becomes seed money to go ahead and use it as matching grants, so we can leverage that and actually multiply. It's a force multiplier. And I, this is, to my mind, this is a first step on that. So if you'll agree, say yes. If not, tell me I'm wrong.
Yeah, absolutely. I do agree.
Thank you.
Where do you think grant money comes from? It's not like it's free money from the, it comes from taxpayers. But what, if this, if, so you're saying we've gone two years and we have not had a plan, and we're going to do a plan now, we're going to figure out what we're going to do? Isn't that an indictment on the whole program that we've been, two years before we decide we need a master plan?
No, I don't believe that's the case at all. I think we've made really good progress. I believe the SWIMAC has made great progress over the past couple of years before we were on board. Certainly, projects have been identified as part of the Athan Creek study. I think this is a much more comprehensive study. This is not an annual study by any means. Again, as I mentioned, this is, the result will produce, in theory, years' worth of projects.
What did we do for the last two years and now six months plus?
It's not him, though, Rich. I mean, if, as I see it, if you have an issue, you have an issue with the seven of us, not with...
You're right, I do. I do have an issue with these people here.
I share your...
Not Phil. Not Phil. Was it there? But...
But for two years, if we need this now...
If we need this now, we needed this two years ago.
I mean, that's the conclusion I make, that we should have been doing tasks three and four, four years ago, and now we're doing it. So, I mean, I'm not arguing over why it wasn't done four years ago, I'm endorsing why it's prudent to do it now. So I just have a few questions. Some of them are comments, some of them are questions. So first, I would shift from study to evaluate because I don't think we need more, I don't think, I don't see us studying. I see us evaluating interventions. And I'm sensing that, you know, we have to spend this amount of money to evaluate the interventions. I see all the value in task three and four. Task two I see as a necessary precursor to task three and four. I don't see a lot of value in task one, so I would need you and I would need the stormwater group to tell me that there's value in task one. Task one sounds more like what Rich has expressed his concerns. It's more about identifying where the problematic areas are. I think we've already done that. As I see it, we would, we just need to start evaluating interventions. And then, Phil, when you were talking, so you identified, you saw this as getting to task five. And what I think we have to decide, I don't know the answer to this, which is why I'm putting it out, I'm not sure that we shouldn't be doing task five first. I'm not sure that we haven't done everything so far between all the money we've spent on evaluating and all the anecdotal observations we have. I'm not sure that we can identify, you know, 10 or 15 problematic areas and then develop the models that support the sensitivity analysis for those problematic areas. So it's the same conclusion, it's the same end that you've come to, but we might be able, and that's what I'd want to hear, your group's input on that question as to whether we could do task five now and essentially eliminate task one. A few other questions. All the interventions that we would evaluate, they would all be intended to undo some pest. There's no, we're not evaluating maintenance money and, you know, things of that sort. This is all, we're going to evaluate capital interventions. That's the vision of this, correct?
That is the vision, yes. We envision really three types of interventions. It might be green infrastructure, so some kind of a mitigation that would reduce runoff, potentially infiltrate the runoff.
So if you had to summarize it in one sentence, would you summarize it as $260,000 to evaluate interventions? Recognizing that an essential element of that is gathering the data necessary to...
Yes.
Build the network necessary to make the evaluation.
Inserting the word prioritize somewhere in there, I think I would completely agree.
Is it, it's not one model, right? It's different models, different areas?
Well, it depends on the areas that are selected, but it is different areas of what could be a model, a single model.
A giant model that in the whole entire township?
Yes.
Okay. And it's reusable, correct? Meaning that we build this model once, we use this model 10, 15 years into the future?
Absolutely.
Right, for years and decade, you know, decades of interventions, possibly?
That's correct.
Okay. And it's all paid by the stormwater fund, correct Elaine? That's what you asked, that it was budgeted at our last meeting? Okay. And then the stormwater advisory committee, when they discuss this, my recollection is you vetted this same issue as to what is the degree of studying and the degree of, sort of the intervention aspect of it? And the group believes that we need to spend $22,000 for that upfront task one?
There was certainly discussion on task one in particular, absolutely. There were some on the committee that did have the same kind of reaction to it, were questioning the value of it. Overall, at the end of the last meeting, there was, I believe, general consensus that it was something that they wanted to recommend to the board, with that being included as it was.
Okay. Could we hear from the committee? Does anybody object if we hear from the committee regarding that specific question of whether task five could be done as task one?
No objection.
Great.
You mean, oh, okay.
Meaning just jump right into, we already know where the problematic areas are, let's identify them and start picking interventions?
I'm happy to hear from the committee, but I can tell you right now, part of the prioritization to me is the cost benefit analysis, because without knowing what the cost is, it's, you can't really do a, in my opinion.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, before, it's interesting of how the, you know, the staff has made recommendations. We've been out there, we've seen this, we know what the priorities are. Five years ago, we had a list. I mean, most of these items here that I know we're going to study, nothing against Dan and his firm, I'm sure they'll do a great report, but we know the areas that flood. We already know that. So I mean, we know what the issues are. The priority should be is first to get the water out of people's homes. That should be number one priority, get it out of the homes first. Second of all, then, is to start then, to start resolving these issues. The issue is, I'm not sure, again, too, I can go back, my experience, 20, 26 years of dealing with this. I've seen models done that have failed, that models tell you great things, and to all the engineers, I apologize for offending any of the engineers who are out here, but I've seen models that have completely failed. So the issue is, you've got people here, if you don't believe us, go talk to the neighbors, because I've seen manholes levitate in this town. I've seen manholes where water's like fountains coming up out of these. We know where the problems are. The issue is, is five years ago, we committed to some of these people, we're going to start fixing issues instead of studying, because I don't know if you remember, there were, we had stacks of studies here. We, studies are, we have studies that tell you where all the problems are. We need to start fixing the problems. That's where the issue, we should start fixing the issues. But all the drawings and everything are going to be great, Chagrin's got all the different flood models and the plans and all that. We should be working on, and I think this goes back, and again, I'm not trying to put words in Don's mouth, but where Don says like to go to number five, we should pick these areas and say, okay, these are the areas. How are we going to start resolving the issues? You know, and I'm not sure if that's what you're looking for, but we know the areas that flood, so let's now take those areas and say, how are we going to fix these problems? You know, what are we going to do to fix these issues here? Because off the top of my head, I mean, I've got some here that we've got to get water out of people's homes first, so people don't have seven sump pumps running in their homes or, you know, water five feet up on their garage doors. That's stuff we should resolve.
Bob, are you saying that you think we could skip to task five? Do task five first?
I think we should...
And then build the model that determines the sensitivity of the intervention and then make a decision about whether it's a valuable intervention?
I think we should go with that, and then we have, yeah, we've got those projects, exactly, and take all those other ones and just not do those. Let's get these projects, let's build that, and let's go. That's my opinion.
Real quick, sorry. So I just want to clarify, so I think it's the difference between prioritizing problems and prioritizing the potential mitigations. So I think that's what we're talking about here. I don't have a problem with moving task five up front, but I just want to clarify that what we had as task one was really looking at all the problem areas and then trying to rank and prioritize at a higher level those problem areas. And then that will then lead to a more focused modeling effort. Again, we're not going to model the entire township, but we will model those high priority areas. Now, if it's known and we want to focus on X number of areas, and that's known off the bat, then certainly we can go right into the modeling at that point, or at least the data collection at that point, with the prioritization happening really at any time. Because that won't really come into play, as I call it prioritization, when we have solutions that we can put into that prioritization tool. Does that make sense?
I think so.
Sorry, Paige.
Well, Paige, do you want to say something? Come on.
Oh, well, commissioners can, regarding item one, we did have a lot of discussion at our last meeting on item one. Certainly, we know for the most part the big flood areas. Part of item one, though, is also, I think, as Dan can speak to, is refining that townshipwide modeling that he's already done. That needs to get completed before the more detailed modeling can go into effect. Another item is, as far as integrating the prioritization somewhat in task one or moving it up, is that, you know, we have concerns about people's homes, we also have concerns of prioritization with public safety matters, and there are other factors that come into play, and we want to make sure that we have everyone's concerns heard and addressed so that we can begin that prioritization process. You know, what areas, if we can solve them in fact, will give us the biggest bang for the buck, will help the most people, will solve problems that our fire department or police department may have in response to calls.
Thank you. Rich? All right. I'm having a lot of trouble right now. I'm supposed to lead to a certain extent on this issue, and I'm having difficulty finding my way. When I joined the board in January of 2012, I was besieged with requests from my constituents to help them with their flooding. Eleven cars were lost in the first ward as a result of a flood in May of 2013. The focus I took was North Wayne Field. I ran into trouble there with delays, and I want to go back to some of the statements that our board members have made over the years, and that is, we shouldn't just go headlong into projects, we should have hard data to understand what the benefit is or will be of the completed project. So getting to this motion, then, is a matter of kind of swallowing my desire to have instant action, but on the other hand, having a study that will, as Don Curley mentioned a moment ago, have very, very long-term value for future generations, future boards of commissioners. So that's enough to really sell anybody on the study. I am hopeful that when you finish, that we will have hard evidence that will enable us to do projects. I know some of my engineer friends call them interventions. I can't understand why, they just can't say projects, but they can't.
I can note of that.
They also say sensitivity analysis.
Bob, put a note in my record, my permanent record, please.
I don't know why they can't say, make a judgment on the value instead of saying a sensitivity analysis, but they can. So I'm going to vote for this. I take note of what Elaine said, that it's not as if we've... I take note of what Elaine said, that it's not as if we've spun our wheels for two years. We've had, we've had some successes, Vanberry and Francis, the middle school, those things, they're very important projects or interventions. And I'm very happy to see those moving. And I, Rich, if you want to put blame on anybody, put it on me. I haven't cracked the whip, I guess, on our Stormwater Advisory Committee.
It is done.
For the...
You are so blamed.
I knew you'd be there on that. So, that's, and Bob, I respect your point. Yes, we have, I don't want to, we haven't studied things to death, but we have done a lot. But this is just one more thing, and I'm hoping that what we get out of this is going to be very, very valuable, and will enable our Board to make reasoned judgments on what makes sense for the citizens of Radnor. So, I'm going to vote for it. Is there somebody or anybody in the audience that would like to comment?
Jim, can I follow up? I anticipate voting for it also. I'm not sure it should be 260, but like even that element that I'm most uncomfortable with is $22,000. So, you know, at some point, do we want to try to make it less? I mean, Bob knows what we, you know, that concern of we don't want unnecessary studies. We don't have to make it less to have them not, like, they can stop it from, you know, from being sort of duplicative of things that we don't need. So, what's your sense? Is your sense try to, try to narrow it down, try to put it down to $220,000, let them come back for more if they want? Or leave it at 260?
Well, can I note that we budgeted 275, and they're coming in less than that? So, at least they're starting out. It doesn't seem like they're artificially inflating anything, I don't know. But they could have come in with a $275,000 proposal, and they didn't.
Is this a firm number, Dan?
When you say a firm number?
Not, not to exceed. You'll do this, all this work, not to exceed irrespective of the hours that you spend, without any cost, without asking for change orders or additional fees.
But Rich, you're an attorney, you know how that works with professional services.
Well, if he says it right now, we might, we have a chance.
If we reduce the amount, they can always come back for more. They can always ask for more. So, I don't want to pick, I don't want to over small amounts, but it's like a lot of money for...
Do you want to do that? Cut it, cut it by 20?
Well, one task in particular that was difficult to put a price on was the data collection task. Again, we don't know what we don't know at this point. So, that was really more, more like an allowance, and that's what Steve Norcini directed us to kind of view that as and shape the scope in that way. We don't know how much effort it's going to take, because we don't know what information's available, we don't know how much more we're going to have to get out in the field. Again, we're not going to be getting information or looking for information that we're not going to use for this model.
But that means it's a soft number, it's not a hard number then. It's not, it's not firm, it's, that's an estimate, that's an allowance.
And Stormwater Management, who are much more qualified than we are to evaluate these numbers, looked at this and recommended this, right?
The committee?
Yeah, Stormwater Management Committee, yes.
Yeah.
Right? I mean, I'm not a, I'm not a stormwater engineer, I have no idea how to put numbers on any of these tasks. So, if they're telling me it's, that those are good numbers, and I agree, if you need more, you're going to have to come back and ask for it, you know, we're set at a certain number. But I don't know how to put a value on these or a cost on these. So, if they're telling me that these numbers are good, and again, it's below what we budgeted, I'm trying to figure out, you know, where we're going to come up with, how someone's going to justify a different number than what you've come up with and what Stormwater Management's come up with.
It looks like we have one or two people up here that would like to cut 20 or 22,000 out. It looks like the balance, which is four people, Commissioners would just as soon go with the recommendation of Paige Maz's committee and your thinking on it as well. So, unless Rich or Don wants to make a motion to cut any of the dollars out, I'll just move ahead to the, to the motion now that's on the phone.
I'll move, we delete Task One.
Delete Task One. That'll be, second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Do public comment.
Okay, let's take public comment. Does anybody in the audience want to say anything on this? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Yeah, I'm Tim Sasse, I just recently joined Stormwater Committee, I'm kind of playing catch-up a little bit. But I had a couple of questions, just listen to everybody, like there's a, there's previous studies that were done, and my, one of my concerns would be that we don't end up with a static study. So, like, say if we build like a 50-story building in Radnor, how robust is this model to accommodate future growth and future development? And who's going to take ownership of this? Are we going to continually go to CH2M Hill for them to model any kind of new development? I mean, is this sort of a proprietary model, or is this something that we're going to hand over to our engineering department that's going to be a, you know, a live document that's going to determine what the stormwater impact is for any kind of development in the township? That would be my only concern. We don't want to have, in my opinion, we don't want to have a static one-off, sort of spend this kind of money and have a, you know, it's a great study for this snapshot in time, but I think if we, you know, if we take the effort to, you know, incorporate this in the township's business, then we'll have something that's going to be able to be used, like you're saying, like a master plan. We won't have these stacks like we have with the Chagrin, sort of a document.
All right. Dan, do you want to comment on that?
Sure, that's a good comment. Most of the hydraulic modeling would be done in EPA Swim software, which is publicly available, and that's a fairly common model platform that communities use. So, that would become not a static, this would not be a static effort. It's certainly something that could be used, it would be the ownership of the township, it could be used to explore other potential mitigation projects down the, down the road, to build upon, to refine. Certainly, it doesn't, it's not a static model. I think that might be what is the differentiator between the older studies that were done.
And we would own it such that if, if we severed our relationship with CH2M Hill, we would keep the model, the next entity could come in and operate the model?
That's correct. Yes.
All right. Is there any further comment from the audience or up here? Then on the motion of Rich Booker and seconded by Don Curly is to delete Item One from the CH2M proposal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And it fails two to five, two to four. All right, then, on the main motion, is there, I think that's been moved and seconded. So, has that not been moved? All right, because that was my, my agenda item. Thank you. Okay. All right, I will, I will go ahead and move the passage of...
I'll second that.
Let's put it in the record that the township would own the model. So, I'm going to make a...
Well, it's an intellectual property issue, and it goes to the contract terms, and I think we just have to, do you know your contract well enough to say that in this case, we own it and you have a license to it?
If we don't own it, though, if we can't use it, then in five years, then that, I mean, even you made that point. You made that point that this is something that we're purchasing for a decade.
Yes.
And if we can't, if we don't have use of that beyond CH2M Hill, then we might not be able to use it.
All right, I think that's an important point. You don't have your contract with you, Steve Norcini would probably have it, but he's not here tonight. John, you don't know offhand...
I haven't seen it.
...how the intellectual property is, so...
Can I make a suggestion? We just put it in there, and if it's, if it's a problem, we take it out?
At least add it to the motion.
So, I'm going to make a motion that we, I'm going to, amendment that we include that the township has ownership of whatever model is produced.
Second.
Okay. Is it model or models? I mean, is...
Model, parentheses, S, end of parentheses.
Okay. All right, no, it's, all right, and is there any comment up here in the audience on that question? So, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, and it passes six to zero. All right, that motion then, that, with that change, is now law, or it's now, so you're, you've got the contract and you're going ahead. Okay. All right.
Jim, was that a motion to make an addition to the, to the main motion?
Yeah, and I think it was...
I think we should vote on the main motion.
On the main motion.
Okay, so it was not both at one time?
That was just the amendment, right.
Okay. So, let's now, let's now vote on the motion as amended. Is there any comment from anybody in the universe or up here? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay. Excuse me.
Okay, so that, all right, I think she said...
I was an aye.
Aye. So, that passes five to one with Commissioner Booker opposed.
There was an I pronounced nay.
Now, we have another item, 215 Midland Avenue, they, property owners have requested a waiver of Section 245-22 of the Stormwater Management Ordinance, and as I understand it, as I've read the materials, the problem here is that they would like to comply, but the mother nature, mother nature will not let them, and so they have an alternative to make sure that it's obvious that they're doing what, indirectly what the law requires them directly to do. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Springer, and I'm the engineer with Ken Behringer and Jeff Moore to present our information. This is 215 Midland between Luella and Aberdeen, and it is a low spot within the township on South Wayne. It is where there used to be some ponds in the old location of the original property. And we have provided a site plan, which is in your packet, and some percolation test results. The site plan was done, as well as the stormwater presentation within the site plan, at the time while we were still waiting for the perk test results to come back. So, we had done other projects on Midland before and knew what we were up against, but not quite the exact values that the percolation tests would, would present. So, we came up with what is often works when you can't really infiltrate your, your water that well, you can use a level spreader, which is what you have in front of you. But oftentimes, when you have a percc rate of zero, which is what they have here, even the level spreader is not going to make it infiltrate. So, the, what we are requesting is a waiver to Section 245-22 that would allow them to collect the water off the downspouts, put it in underground, and put it in a perforated pipe as it drains into the sanitary sewer vein that runs through their backyard. We did two perk tests, one in the front, one in the rear.
Sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer.
Stormwater sewer, sorry. Storm sewer, no wonder your eyes got big. I'm going to change this up a lot, actually. So, there's a storm sewer that runs in the backyard, and we did two perk tests, one was in the front, one was in the back. We put them at places where you kind of have to stay away from foundations, because obviously if you're going to infiltrate water, you don't want to infiltrate into your basement. And we also had to look at trees, we didn't want to tear down trees to put in stormwater systems, because that's not very good practice. So, we were limited on where we could put it, plus we had to stay in the front part of the yard, we had to stay away from, you know, other people's properties. So, you're limited, first of all, where you can put something like this, especially in these smaller lots. And then when you get a zero percc rate, you can't use a level spreader. So, we're in a situation now where we've got a lot of water on this property, it's the low point, it's the old location, and we can't have it sitting on the property, or it's just going to come right back into the house. And it's just going to fill with water from everybody else that's running there, too. So, you dig a pit, it's just going to sit there with water, so you're going to have mosquitoes and everything else. So, we would like to put it into the downspouts off of the, off of the roof, get it into the pipe underground. It will be a perforated pipe with the hope that if there's an opportunity to infiltrate it can, but then it'll go into the storm sewer, which is located on their property. And so, we just would like to get a waiver to do that.
How is it treated now?
It just sits on the property.
It drains right onto the lawn, or...
It drains out onto the lawn.
Uh huh. So, in going through the numbers here, it looked like you're adding about 1,400, but you're also taking away. So, the delta is 100, about 100 new square feet.
Correct. We are building, the addition is going where there's already impervious surface except for a delta of about 100. So, it's 0.5% total increase of impervious surface. It's very minor, and we're attempting to do whatever we can, but we can't perk the water, we can't infiltrate it.
Okay.
Elizabeth, I don't see the stormwater pipe on these drawings. Can you point it out?
Sure. Oh, this is an old one. It is, well, you could probably even point out this as well.
It comes right across the back of this lot, turns in the driveway and comes out.
It appears to be on that drawing, is it on the drawing?
It is not on the drawing.
What's the size of that existing?
18-inch diameter. It's an 18-inch diameter galvanized pipe, it's put in the 40s from what we can tell.
This is your home?
No.
Is this...
I live next door.
Oh. So, who's the applicant, then?
We are. It's an LLC, Jeff Moore and myself.
So, is this a development for sale?
It will be.
Is there any other houses involved?
No. Just one.
It all sounds reasonable to me. I anticipate supporting it, it's consistent with what we've done when we've encountered this situation previously, so I anticipate supporting it.
I can appreciate the problem, because the lots are small. I have a small lot, and I have a similar situation. With regard to the point you made about giving, putting it into the storm sewer pipe and giving it a chance to possibly infiltrate, how deep is that storm sewer pipe?
I believe it's about two feet down, and it's not very deep.
Okay. So, it would still basically be in the same, at the same depth as the impervious soil that's above that, that you've already checked?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move that we require them to come back, show clearly all of the underground appurtenances on the site, including the pipe, and they also show the connection and details related to that connection, including invert elevations on the property and off the property.
How are we going to get that? Is there a second?
To do otherwise is really not in keeping with standard practice or, and good governance.
Well, we don't have our, yes, Mr. Phillips is here. You're talking about a lot of points that, are they in the ordinance that you're, those things you're referring to about...
Yeah, they are in the ordinance, this is a waiver, and, you know, how can you ask for a waiver without even showing what you're going to do?
If I can add a little bit to this, I've spoken several times with the applicant's engineer, and pending the awarding of this waiver tonight, we will finalize these documents. This is being done under, under a grading permit, which, which I handle out of the engineering office. And once that, if this Board should so choose to move forward with this waiver, we will work out the final details, and that will be on the approved grading permit, and that permit will not be approved until the pipeline and some of the other specifics that you refer to will be on, on that drawing.
Does it call for that anywhere? I don't, is that in your letter, or is there any writing to that effect? And if not, we need to include that. If you waive it, they don't need to do anything, if they waive it...
No, no, you're asking to waive one specific section of the ordinance tonight, which waives perking the soil, or infiltrating the stormwater, which is impossible under the findings of the testing that they did. That's the only waiver, you're not waiving any other part of the stormwater ordinance. They still must comply with all other parts of the stormwater ordinance, to my satisfaction, before I will issue a grading permit.
Again, is that written anywhere?
In the stormwater ordinance.
It says in the stormwater ordinance that Roger Phillips will approve, it doesn't say that.
It says the township engineer will approve it.
Township engineer. So, they're going to have to give Roger a plan that shows the connection you're talking about, Rich, before he will issue the permit.
Rich?
But that goes to him, that goes to the township engineer.
On the...
And they're also...
I understand the issue here, and the issue is, well, they can't really build, they need a waiver, because they can't build this without a waiver. And my view is that if we are going to continually waive the... And my view is that if we are going to continually waive the stormwater, which we did for Eastern, we've done for other applicants, if we continually waive it, we shouldn't have a stormwater ordinance. The issue here is, they can't build it without a waiver. Perhaps they should not build it. It doesn't, it doesn't do us any good to have requirements and then to waive them and to selectively enforce them. And if this was a homeowner, for their own home, I might think of it differently, but this is a developer, and we should not allow people to build what they can't build if they can't comply with the ordinance.
The ordinance actually outlines the procedure for a waiver in this instance.
There's no need to do a waiver.
Right. And Roger, we're talking about a .5% difference, right?
In the current impervious, I believe that's the number, if that's what Elizabeth says, yes.
And are you residents? Are you township residents?
Elizabeth is on our planning commission. Rich, I don't think that it's good policy for us to ignore provision in our ordinance that allows for a waiver, and the applicant has done, as far as I can tell, just about everything they can do.
Well, we should get rid of the stormwater ordinance. It doesn't, it's meaningless.
No, I think it's a valuable thing. It's provided for an expert, Mr. Phillips, to do an oversight, a review. It requires the applicant to have a qualified engineer, and so I think we're way ahead of the game. I'm sure there's plenty of jurisdictions around the country that don't have either one of those aspects to it.
And to just be clear with what they're addressing here, they are, it's a very minimal increase in impervious, but under the ordinance, they're required to provide stormwater control on what is considered to be new, which is the addition, which is what they're doing, and that's why they're in front of you here tonight.
Then why do they need a waiver?
Because the ground can't infiltrate.
Okay, so if they need a waiver, then the stormwater ordinance is not serving any function. It's, Roger, there's no...
I disagree with that.
There's no other way to look at it. We waive it, we waived it for Eastern most recently, we waived it for Villanova, we waived this thing. I'm all for less government. Let's get rid of the stormwater ordinance, and then we don't have to worry about waiving it. Then we can pay Roger less, and we can spend less time arguing about these things.
Rich, will you make a motion to deny the waiver, and then we can get moving?
I think that that would waste even more time. It's the, okay, move that we deny the waiver?
Is there a second? All right, under parliamentary rules, you have to have a second, otherwise there's a failure of the motion. So, we're back to where we were, and I'd like to ask for public comment at this point on the request by this applicant. All right, and is there any further, anything further from Mr. Phillips or anybody else with our management? Okay, I think we're ready to vote on this, and this is, this is resolution, no, it's not a resolution, it's just, isn't this a resolution?
Just a motion.
Just a motion, sorry.
Motion to approve the waiver.
All right. I will move the passage of the waiver to be granted for 215 Midland Avenue in Wayne of Section 245-22 of our Stormwater Management Ordinance.
Second.
Mr. Clark seconded it. All those in, well, any further discussion? I don't see any. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed say nay.
Nay.
And it passes five to one. Thank you very much.
Again, we should get rid of the stormwater ordinance, because it's unduly burdensome, apparently, on our constituents. Would be serving us all better not to have it at all.
Okay, thank you. Let's go ahead now. I'm still doing this, okay. Resolution 2016-24, this is authorization to contract with J.J. White Incorporated for HVAC, preventive maintenance and repair services for the Radnor Township Municipal Building, the Activity Center, and our Public Works Facility. So, I will move the passage of Resolution 2016-24. Is there a second?
Second.
This was originally on our consent agenda, and I thought, because this was sufficient dollars and a three-year, I think it's a three-year contract, that it should come out so that it could be discussed, if anybody wanted to discuss it. So, is there any comment from any commissioners?
My only question when I read this was whether the library building had been included in this contract in the past, and what, if there's any adjustments since they'll be closed, or maybe they're doing, was, is that who we used to service the library?
I believe Steve has used this contractor to take a look at that, and I think Steve has omitted them from this because of the work that's gonna be being done at the library. But if there is some type of emergency repair, that they will use this contractor to be able to go over and take care of.
Under this contract?
Yes, based on an hourly rate. And that cost, I believe is, I believe there's a dollar amount there that, when it goes over a certain amount, the township does pay for that, that the library does share in the expense with those repairs.
All right. Bob, did we bid this competitively?
Steve had taken quotes. It doesn't exceed the $25,000 for public bids, but Steve does go and get quotes, and that's why it's over my threshold for my approval, and it falls under the $25,000 limit. That's why it's in front of the board here this evening.
Okay. All right, I think it's been moved and seconded. Did we get a second?
Yeah.
Okay. And is there any comment from the board? And is there anybody in the audience that wants to comment? All right, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. It passes six to zero. All right, I'm going to now move ahead, and we're at public safety, which is Commissioner Schaefer. No, I'm sorry, Personal Administration, Mr. Ar, Commissioner Ar.
Thanks, Jim. I'd like to move ordinance number 2016-02. This is an adoption, approving the agreement of sale, buy, and between Radnor Township and 240 Radnor Chester Road Investment LP for a property located at 240 Radnor Chester Road. This is something that we saw last meeting as an introduction, and now it's at the adoption stage. And John Rice, can I call upon you just to give a little history about it?
I'll second.
Seconded, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, as the board will recall, there was a discussion at your last meeting when this was introduced. This is a 2,500-square-foot property that the township has owned since the 50s, and the agreement of sale is between the township and the adjacent property owner. We had a discussion at the last meeting regarding the deed restrictions that would be replaced, would be placed on the property and on some adjacent properties owned by the same property owner. So, it's been advertised, after introduction, was advertised in the February 12th edition of the newspaper. The purchase price on it is $50,100, and this also resolves the issue of the traffic signal easement that the township will be acquiring for the traffic signal light at Radnor Way. So, it's ready to go. I think there was a lot of discussion.
I think we had fully discussed this at our last meeting. Is there any commissioner that wants to say anything at this point?
I would just say, some new information that came to light to me today was that there's some question related to the parcel where the ownership of the existing offices on Radnor Chester Road. So, what's the status, right, so right next to the 50 by 50 location and co-terminus with the property line for the existing Radnor Chester, it was 254 Radnor Chester Road, which there's an existing office building on, a white former home. My understanding was that that was going to be purchased also by Mr. Gross, and I want, I don't know that that's the case, and I don't know that that is addressed in here at all. That parcel is part of the plan, so do you have any?
Nick Canelle, you're representing, I guess, the LLC 240 Radnor Chester...
I'm referring to address 254 Radnor Chester Road, says, in this drawing, it says Campbell.
Yes, not owned by Mr. Gross or any of his entities at this point.
And the intent, though, is that he will own that, correct?
Possibly, yes, if they go forward with the agreement of sale. That's always been discussed. As you know, the zoning hearing decision incorporated that for his decision, and it's always been discussed, full knowledge of what was going on with that piece.
How was that incorporated with this decision by the zoning hearing board?
Mr. Gross had asked for approval for a office building that was approved by the zoning hearing board that has not proceeded a land development yet. We discussed this, Rich. We've talked about this for months.
Yeah, but I'm, but when we look at this drawing here, we have this portion, this office, he said that that was gonna come down, it was gonna be green space right here.
Yes, correct.
So, is that still, is that still going to happen? And what do we have, what provision do we have in there to ensure that happens, or do we not have any?
The agreement provides that any property acquired by Mr. Gross, in addition to this property, will be green space.
Is there a chance that Mr. Gross, you just said, will not acquire this property?
Well, if he doesn't acquire the property, then he's not gonna be able to build his addition as being proposed. So, I guess there's always a possibility.
Any other commissioner want to say anything? Does anybody from the management want to say anything, or from the audience? Then I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Okay, the motion passes five to one. All right. I'm gonna come back to Commissioner Ar, but I'm now at public safety with Commissioner Schaefer.
I'd like to move Resolution 2016-29, approving Tommy's Main Line Towing and Sadler's Automotive to serve as primary towers for Radnor Township.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions from the board?
Nope.
I have one, but I'll wait. Does anybody from, the superintendent want to say anything about this?
Mr. Chairman, just an overview real quickly. Ordinance 2005-17 states that every two years, the police department is required to advertise for police towing companies, so that they may be used for official Radnor Township business as needed by the department. That business would be removal and storage of disabled, wrecked, or abandoned vehicles, as you know. And advertisement was made in local newspapers, soliciting applications from towing companies. We received the two applications that are the ones we're recommending, and that was Tommy's Main Line Towing and Sadler's Automotive. They met all of the requirements of the ordinance.
All right, my question is, how do you, how are they chosen each time there's a need?
Every two years, when we get the applications.
When your department has a need for a tow, hook up, and how do you decide between Tommy's and Sadler's?
Well, we go by, I guess, a wheel, for lack of a better term. If it's Tommy's first, the next one will be Sadler's, and so on and so forth. And there's never an inconsistency where someone is claiming to be favored over the other, there's plenty of work for both of them to share.
Okay, that's the only question I had. Anybody in the audience have any questions? All right, I'm gonna call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay, and it passes six to zero. And I would like to now go to Community Development, Don Curley.
Nothing to report.
And I'd like to go back to Commissioner Phil Ar to give us a report on the Villanova community, I forgot the full name of it, but it's our...
Care.
Care, thank you very much.
Good, thanks, Jim. Just a brief update on the Villanova Development Care Group, that we had our first meeting last Thursday, February 18th, and the purpose of it, to remind, is to communicate and review and plan, and give the neighbors a seat at the table with Radnor Township and Villanova. The committee is composed of two key people from Villanova, key people from, including the township manager and Steve Orsini from Radnor Township, and two appointed Radnor residents who are neighbors to the development, Jane Galley and Rick Leonardi, and myself is also a part of that group. We also were joined by Roger Phillips and John Haspak, who was the township arborist, and also the inspector for the project day-to-day on the site, that works with Roger Phillips. I characterize it as a good meeting, as a good discussion of ideas, because this was the first meeting of its kind, actually. We had a very full agenda. We solicited points that we wanted to discuss in advance, so we had some very specific things to go with. We had some pent-up questions and concerns that have been lingering for several weeks or months, and I think most of them were resolved to good satisfaction to all involved. The purpose of the meeting is to provide a process, so that we can have discussion, collaboration, and to mitigate some of the issues that may come up during this process. Some of the things that have recently come about were that Villanova has moved to a new phase, where while they're finishing up the West Lancaster parking lot, they're now moving to move on to the Pike Garage on the East Main Lot. So, you'll notice if you drive by that area, that East Main Lot is now cordoned off, and they will begin development on it. They actually started today to do some movement on that. They're providing a crosswalk and a temporary sidewalk on the west side of Ithaca Avenue, because they will close that east side sidewalk. So, we learned some more of Villanova's plans. They had a neighbors' meeting where they met with neighbors, interested neighbors at Villanova, and February 10th, I attended that meeting, as well as a lot of other neighbors. And in addition, they're providing some information to us as we meet at these meetings, too. I think other issues that we're concerned about were issues that had to do with buffering on the Route 100 line towards the part that faces the neighbors. We also talked about some of the parking requirements during the part or the construction, and determined that all the parking was, requirements were fulfilled, even though they moved from one phase to the other. Some of the other things that we're talking about moving forward would be some of the planning issues about how we mitigate some issues that may come up as they close that other parking lot, working with residents and pedestrians in the area, and also some situations where we may have stoppages, at least at some point or another, while materiel is being brought in from the Blue Route and other issues right there concerned with building on Ithaca Avenue. So, I think in the end, we're gonna meet, we probably meet monthly, but we want to get off to a fast start. So, we're going to have a meeting two weeks from the original date, that'll be March 3rd, at 6:30. We meet upstairs, outside the administrative area, outside of Bob Z's office. Also attended was a number of members of the public, so the public is certainly involved to come to this, invited to come to this, and we hope they come for their edification and also to contribute to the purpose of the meeting. You can also mention that there's a special section about the group that is on the Radnor Township website, it's under the committees. We have posted our agenda on there. Once the minutes of the meetings have been approved by all the people, we'll also post the minutes of that meeting, and any future meetings coming forward. For those who are interested in learning more about the Villanova project, I think the best way to get there is to go to the Township website. You'll see in the left-hand column, there's a series of special projects, and the one at the very bottom is called Villanova, obviously. And if you click that link, that'll take you to the Radnor Township website about the Villanova project. There is another link that takes you directly to Villanova's site, and you can find out more about their project there. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll be glad to answer, but thanks for the opportunity to give that report.
Thank you, Phil. I think the most important thing is that it sounds as if the, there are good feelings that on all three sides, Township, Community, and Villanova, things, at least at this point, are, it's a good atmosphere.
We had a good productive discussion. I think that everybody walked away that I've talked to felt that it was a very good meeting, a very good collaboration, and looking forward to more of the same going forward.
Thank you. We are now at Parks and Recreation, which I will take up. Commissioner Nagel is off tonight, and I would like to take the opportunity of talking about a need in the township for an ordinance. And I've asked one of our community residents, Jeff Pritchard, to be with us tonight. You've probably all read in the newspapers about the plans of a developer to take down the historic Covered Wagon Inn at the corner of Old Eagle School Road and Lincoln Highway, to cite a little history. And there's been an outpouring of community, community opposition to the plan. Most people, I think, feel that that building has had creative reuse... Most people, I think, feel that, that building has had creative reuses over the years, and the general attitude is, why take it down now for a, one of those, basically a drugstore, a super-type drugstore? I, I had reason now to call Jeff to be with us tonight because I wanted to know exactly what the situation is in the township with regard, in our township now. I should, I need to add something, that the historic Covered Wagon Inn is just outside the township line, just outside the first ward that I represent in Tridifern Township. So I wanted to know what the regulatory picture is in Radnor, and I think I already knew the answer, but I consulted Jeff anyway, and I'd like to, Greg, I'm sorry, I keep calling you Jeff.
No problem. That's my dad.
I should know, because I know your mother very well. That, I, I'd like you to just give us a briefing on where we are in trying to preserve, from a regularist, regulatory standpoint, historic buildings in the township.
Sure. Well, thanks, Jim, and I won't take up too much of your time. First of all, I don't know if I've spoken before Commissioners R. and Clark, but welcome, and I just prepared a couple of brief ideas and thoughts.
Jeff, just tell us, Greg, sorry. Your academic, I know you've got a master's from Cornell, but talk a little bit about your academic and other experience.
Right. Well, I received a master's in historic preservation planning at Cornell University. I've been on the board of Radnor Historical Society since 2007 and do a lot of things in the, the community, so. I also worked in the Delaware County Planning Department Office over two, two summers, helping to compile and update historic inventory of Radnor Township properties.
Thank you.
Expanding on what, what was prepared 20, 25 years before. So right now, Radnor Township has a Harb, of course, which has oversight of demolition, additions, exterior modifications to buildings within the three locally designated historic districts, which are North Wayne, South Wayne, Llewella Court. And obviously, while these districts contain many very important historic buildings, and that's why, why they were designated historic districts, there are many more sites scattered throughout the township that have no protections. And the Covered Wagon Inn, if it were a couple of feet southeast, it would be one of those. So basically, the demolishing the Anthony Wayne Theater, or the Wayne Hotel, or Radnor Friends Meeting House, permit-wise, in terms of historic ordinances that are currently in place, would be as easy as tearing down a ranch home from the 1980s or a fast food restaurant. In a place as special as Radnor, I guess a lot of us have been asking, is that what we want? There are few simple things that can be done right now to enhance historic preservation in Radnor. First of all, this, this will probably be easiest, help the existing Harb by making sure it's working with the most accurate information available. Right now, they're working from inventories that, of properties in historic districts that date 25-plus years old, and as a result, we've, we've learned a lot more about the buildings in those districts since then, and so as a result, a lot of buildings are listed as non-contributing when they're actually over 100 years old, and there are even more properties that were left off the list. And occasionally, the Harb even rules on, it changes to buildings that aren't on the inventory. So it's clearly an out-of-date and inaccurate document. The, so, yeah, in fact, the first century-old building in the 10-plus-year history of the Harb will be demolished in a Radnor Historic District because of the erroneous survey, and that's the Bloomingdale Avenue development by Benson Homes. So the second thing is to consider establishing new historic districts within the township. And about 10 years ago, the township hired a preservation planner to identify potential districts similar to North and South Wayne in terms of size and accumulation, density of historic buildings. They found several areas with as many important structures as the existing districts, and in just the past few years, one of those proposed districts, Downtown Wayne, earned a listing on the National Register of Historic Places, meaning that it's not only just locally significant, but it's considered nationally noteworthy in terms of historic integrity by the National Park Service itself. So despite this national recognition, there are and can be no protections for any building in that area if you don't enact a new ordinance. The third thing is considering protecting buildings around the township that are important enough to be recognized, that are outside of historic districts. As I mentioned, there are historic structures everywhere that deserve the same respect and oversight as those within the current Harb districts, and attempts to identify them for protection date back to the Comprehensive Plan of 1988. They produced a list of about 100 properties back then, and a lot of us think that it's time to bring that long-fought idea to fruition. Looking around Radnor, at our neighbors, Lower Marion is way ahead of us when it comes to historic preservation protections, and if you read the paper just last week, or this week, you would have seen a story about their Harb and Historical Commission proposing several new properties for inclusion on their already extensive list of protected properties. They're also working right now to list a residential section of Ardmore as a new Harb district, and the same article mentions a recent success story of the 1799 William Penn Inn in Wynwood on Lancaster Avenue, which was saved thanks to a demolition delay mandated by the Lower Marion Commissioners, forcing the developers to consider other options. And it worked. As a result, it's gonna be saved and repurposed, and there's nothing remotely like that here in Radnor for sites that aren't within those three districts. And as Jim mentioned, to our west, the proposed demolition of the Covered Wagon Inn for a CVS right over the border in Tridifern. Like here, like Radnor Township, Tridifern has nothing to prevent the destruction of that building, so citizens are the ones speaking up to protest the project, and they've, they've done a pretty good job. They've gotten something around 4,000 signatures and a petition. A lot of people from all around the country who are from this area are very upset about it. So the next time an important place is threatened in Radnor, I feel we shouldn't have to organize big protests and publicity campaigns when most other places, as special as, in most places, as special as ours, it's a matter of policy. So I'll try to answer any questions you have, but that's, that's all I've prepared to say.
Any questions from commissioners?
Well, have you had a discussion within Harb about sort of formalizing those requests for changes? You know, maybe making a, a recommendation, a formal recommendation to this board to make those changes?
Well, we've just had a, a big turnover in the Harb.
Right, right, you have.
And we have a lot of new members, a lot of them are just getting acclimated, but that's, yeah, that's something that I think would be good to, for them to discuss amongst themselves, and of course, the inventory issue is something that I think directly impacts them. The expansion of districts may be along the line, but actually, what, what they do in Lower Marion and other places is for the scattered sites, there's a Historical Commission, which is a separate board that looks at those, and the Harb really focuses on the districts instead.
They have a Harb and a Historic Commission?
In Lower Marion, yes.
Wow.
You mentioned properties classified as non-contributing.
Right.
Within what, what, is there, is there an inventory that you're, that goes as part of?
Yeah. Yeah, there's a list of properties that the township goes by. The contributing is considered, buildings built within the period of significance or older. So for South Wayne, for example, it's, I believe, 1870 through 1915. That's considered the time when the most buildings were built, that the development patterns were as consistent as, as they could be.
And, and is that list kept by our community development director, his office?
I'm actually not sure about that, but it's, it's referenced to by the Harb and occasionally, in the instance of Bloomingdale, it was used as reasoning for the demolition of that building.
All right. Can you make it one available to, to our board?
Well, it's, it's in the township documents. I'm not quite sure who has it.
Would that be in our inventory of documents, Bob?
I, I think you can get it online. Maybe through the Historical Society? I don't, I've, I've gotten it online somehow.
The, the Historical Society's been compiling an updated survey with, as, as we find new information, as we find, for example, that a certain architect designed a house that's contributing, we add that information, but it's separate from any official document.
Oh, I see.
All right. You mentioned only three districts. Isn't the, the Wayne Business area is, is now on the state register or maybe the national register?
Right. This is a little complicated. There's locally designated, that's what the Harb looks at, then there's nationally designated, which is really just sort of a ceremonial thing, ceremonial recognition. Now, in some places, national designation means automatic Harb oversight or, or something similar. In this case, it's Downtown Wayne, and it received national recognition, I believe this was three or four years ago, and there was some fanfare about it, but there's no protection for any building within the district.
We have valuable, valuable buildings in that district.
Sure.
We have the Old Opera House, the Anthony Wayne Theater. We have the, I think it was Wayne Title and Trust, which is on the southwest corner of Lancaster and Wayne Avenue.
Yeah, and I would note that none of those buildings are really threatened at this point, but it might be good to have some, some oversight there in case of uncharacteristic modifications.
All right. So your four, your three steps were give our Harb, which is the Historic Architectural and Review Board, the most accurate information possible, and
Right.
we would do that by getting that, making that list, update that list?
Well, finding the list, going through property by property, maybe even walking the neighborhood, and deciding if what's on there is accurate, based on the information that we have.
And that would be something for a citizens committee to do?
Potentially.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and members of the Harb, and it's a good way, maybe for them, since they're new, to, to familiarize themselves with the neighborhoods.
And the second step was establish a new, new historic districts where we could. Do you have anything in mind, besides Downtown Wayne?
Well, potentially, St. David's neighborhood, Downtown Itham, where Conestoga Road and Radnor Chester Road intersect. Banjo Town is a little cluster of houses off Newtown Road where the residents there are very interested in something like that, and.
And then your third step was to recognize buildings outside the historic districts.
Right.
And that would be something that the Harb would do with maybe some, some community committee formed to help them.
Yeah, and, and again, dating back to 1988, the 100 or 200 properties were identified. Our, our citizens group in the past year put together an updated list, removing those that have been lost and adding a few that new information has arisen about, so, yeah.
The last thing was not on your list, but I'm wondering, an ordinance, what, what should we be doing about consideration of an ordinance?
Well, steps two and three could be ordinances. Step two could be a revision to the existing Harb ordinance. Step three could be a new ordinance recognizing those scattered properties across the township. And surrounding communities, like Lower Marion, Haverford, other, a few other Delaware County municipalities have similar things that can be drawn from.
It sounds to me like the, what you're telling us, your opinion of the main weakness of it, is just that it's not broad enough in its, which properties it would include, which buildings it would include, so that if we could bring the other properties into the same jurisdiction of the current ordinance, you think that would be a significant improvement?
Well, I think it could be, and the three existing districts, I grew up in North Wayne, it's, it's my favorite place, and they're all wonderful, but there are some equally wonderful places that deserve as much protection, a lot of people feel.
Just a suggestion. Harb does certain things, whether it's local or a nationally designated, the one thing I didn't hear anybody talk about is whether you can do something in your zoning ordinance. The planning code has two specific provisions which were added, I think under Governor Ridge, that basically says that municipalities should enact ordinances to protect and preserve historic resources. So what some townships have done is have sort of an overlay which incorporates all the historic resources, and then there's some standards if you want to remove it, if you want to demo it, and there's certain levels of protection. You might have a Class 1 resource, which is something that you really want, and it may be a Class 2, but at least, some of it is protection and preservation and stopping things. Some of it lets you take a historic resource and reuse it, like old churches. I think Lower Marion has some kind of an ordinance that has started to do that.
Right.
And then there's other old resources that really probably aren't worth doing anything but knocking them down. And, but there's a mechanism to identify them before building permit gets issued or demo permit gets issued. So that's a zoning provision that you can, separate and apart from Harb, that I know at least a handful of townships that we deal with have adopted what's called a historic resources ordinance. So it's another tool, if you want to go down that path.
That's a direction I'd like to take. I'd like to see how we can do that. I don't know if Kevin Kachansky would be the person that we would call upon to draft something?
Probably Kevin, or, I mean, I guess, I mean, we have something that we've done, so I, it wouldn't be reinventing the wheel. It would have to be sensitive to Radnor, and I don't know what's on the books in terms of historic resources and buildings. I know there's some publications, I know I've looked at some of them, but there'd have to be some judgment on, because they're not all created equally. They're all old. I mean, I was in a field last summer looking at a log barn in Bucks County that, we had a private client that wanted to take it down, and the township stopped us from doing it. And then, but we went out, they all came out, they had a historic group, or maybe it was a planning commission came out, and there was really no way to restore it, replace it. We talked about moving it, but it had old logs that, you know, once our client took it down, ended up going somewhere that needed old logs, you know, some other property in Bucks or Montgomery County. So, but it was on a list that the township had. It was a class, I think they had it as the lowest Class 3 resources. It's about an 1825 log building that was in the middle of the field. Sort of, sort of neat, but
Yeah.
you couldn't preserve that. I mean, you're talking about properties in this township that are, have been preserved to some extent, are probably in pretty good shape, and you'd have a better, you're probably gonna want to have more preservation-oriented provisions. You do run into these private property rights issues when you go down this path, so. But, you know, there's some policy decisions, the planning commission or the Harb board could work on it. You know, we could give Kevin the info that we have, and then he can run with it from there with either of those boards.
That would be great. If, if it's okay with the other commissioners, I'd like to see that happen.
I, I just think it's a mistake for us to start off with an ordinance. We do this all the time. We should start off with concepts. And to me, the way we should do it is, you should identify the concepts, John, you should identify them, Jim, you should identify them, you bring them to us, and then we agree on the concepts, and then we turn them over to, to, to John. My concern is that this has to have balance in it, so I'm open, and I'm willing to support this, and I'm, I'm willing to expand our historic preservations, but there has to be balance. And I'm, I'm afraid that what will happen is it will come back and it will just be a property rights grab. And so if that's, and I don't want to have to fight against that in an ordinance. I want this to be, if we decide to do that, we decide to do it as a concept, and we let them put it into a draft ordinance. So to me, that would be a preferable way to do it.
I don't have any objection to that. Do you, Elaine, how do you feel?
I, I can agree with Don. I think there's a couple of ways to do it, and Greg, it's a, you could certainly come up with a scatter
come up with a scatterskite, a scattered site district in a certain sense, which is kind of like, not a district like South Wayne, but actually, you designate whoever gets put in it as if they were all together, is that correct?
Right, so the boundaries are just the township borders.
That's right, yeah. So that's another way to handle it, rather than a zoning thing. So there's a lot of ways to deal with it, and I think it'd be great for them to, and a good exercise for the new folks to identify how they would, what is to be done and how they would do it.
And take a look at what neighboring municipalities do, Lower Marion, similar, and the kinds of resources that are here, that might be a good place to start, Haverford as well, so.
Can I, can I?
It looks like you have the support on this board of moving forward with this. I'd like your idea of sort of indoctrinating the new board with, you know, trying to figure out what to include in terms of what's already designated, that, those districts, and the districts that you would add on, especially if you already have a resource in, the Historical Society has already started to put additions, and so it's not really starting from scratch.
Right.
But I'm fine with, with Don's suggestion of sort of having it germinate from you to us, put our head around the concept, and then go to how do we, how do we put this in a statute, or whether we just update HARB, or whether we do, you know, then deciding that. So I'm glad you brought this forward, this is really timely.
Great. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. Okay. Yeah, that's finance and audit, I haven't, John Nagel?
No.
Me.
Oh, it's Phil, okay.
I'll just briefly mention that last week, the Carfac had a meeting, that three of us attended, I was there, Luke Clark was there, Elaine was there, and they were speaking about, kind of focusing on issues of the business privilege and mercantile taxes. And it was a good discussion, and I think the folks that were there, representing the small businesses, felt they had a good airing of what they wanted to talk about it, and the Carfac folks were, and the township folks were very willing to listen to some of the things they were talking about. Luke, would you add anything from that, you were there?
Yeah, I thought it was a very productive meeting, and I agree, Bob Tate and Bill White were very inviting to the small business owners in terms of coming in to see them and air their grievances, and hopefully working towards a resolution. So I think it was a good discussion, it was a good start, and the hope is that we keep it going.
I also provided comments to Bill White on that, on that issue, which I don't think I, I don't think I copied everyone else. But basically, again, I reiterated my opposition to the contingent fee auditors, and that those contingent fee auditors exacerbate existing difficulties and frictions between the township and, and our small business community, and has caused certain businesses to leave, especially the asset management businesses, because of this, the enforcement, and because of the tax and the enforcement of it. So those are all issues that we really should focus on and try to address.
All right. Is there a report from the library committee?
Yes, there was a meeting on the 18th, and the library board is moving along with the construction plans for the library, which are about 70% complete. Kimmel Bogret, who's the engineering firm, did determine that several reviews would be undertaken, in addition to an issue we talked about earlier tonight, related to setback for the, for the construction. So we're working on a solution to that. It looks like that, there is some additional expense on the engineering that was above what was planned. So hopefully, we'll see for the 28th, the plans for review by the board, and shoot for the 11th of April for a final, but that's what I plan right now, is the 28th for caucus and preliminary slash final plans on April 11th. So March 28, caucus, and April 11th for the design approvals.
A constituent emailed me today about the fate of the employees during the time period of construction. Is it your understanding that the library will be closed during the period of construction?
They were working on various contingent plans, I don't recall what the, no, the thought would be to have a temporary space, I think initially.
Yeah, they're renting space across the way in the old library building.
Okay, come in here.
Which is sort of apropos, but a small space, so they're keeping on some subset of employees throughout the...
Okay. Well, this constituent was telling me that people had to resign from the roles when construction began, and would then have to reapply for their position when construction was over and the new building was commissioned.
Don't know anything about that.
That may be. I don't, I don't know whether that's true or not.
Yeah. That would be a decision that's being made by the Board of Trustees of the library, I assume. It's not, not, Bob, we're not involved in that in any way, are we?
Not at all. That's not our staff, we have no jurisdiction over them.
All right, so I'll just tell my constituent that we're not involved, sorry.
Yeah, I think the place to talk about that is the next library meeting in March.
Yeah, okay. All right. Public health, I don't have anything to say, John Nagel's not here. Does anybody have anything about public health they want to talk about? Any old business tonight? Any new business? Any public participation? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, we are adjourned.